Like to call the meeting to a close. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Kinsella.
Here.
Alderman Pousa.
Here.
Alderman Bidner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Gentlemen.
Here.
Alderman Cybert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Almore.
Here.
Alderman Whittington.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
All sixteen aldermen present, roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Flynn.
Here.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Roy Scarlett-Lau.
Here.
Jamie Maitre.
Here.
Tim Greggwoods.
Here.
Sherry Favreau.
Here.
Lee Under Spearman.
Here.
Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer. Debbie Belleville.
Here.
And Bob Sabo.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer and Bill Clay are excused. Lieutenant Sprints is here from Police Administration. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which holds its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We do have a public hearing this evening, and I'm going to officially open the public hearing. This public hearing is titled "For the Shopland Plaza Business District Plan." Eric, or you and Mr. Narber are going to make some, Mr. Narber, make some opening comments? Just to review everybody for what's happening?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Eric is going to put up the board, which identifies the proposed Shopland Plaza Business District. The business district, if adopted, will levy an additional 1% sales tax on commercial retail activities inside this approximately seven acre area. The properties that you see, which include a hardware store and a restaurant, those two buildings on site are approximately 57% vacant, and along with other factors that are outlined in the report on Shopland demonstrate that the area is blighted under the definitions of that term in the Business District Development and Redevelopment Act. The levying of the tax will provide revenues over an up to 23-year period of time to assist in the payment of property assembly and land acquisition, various public improvements, the renovation and rehabilitation of the buildings on the site, and certain soft costs that have to do with fees which may be incurred by the developer. The total budget for this area is $2.5 million. The revenues, as I have said, will come from the levying of an additional sales tax in the business district and will then be used to assist in the activities of the developer. There is a developer who has responded to the city's RFP that developed, pardon me, that developer, O'Fallon Hardware LLC and NP Properties are the one responding, and I know that the city has been in negotiations for some time now with representatives of that organization. Again, if the city determines to proceed this evening, the business district will be established. The tax will be imposed as of July 1st, 2017, and the revenues will then be available for payment or repayment of the $2.5 million in project costs, which I had generated.
Mr. Narber, Eric, this is business district number five?
Seven.
Seven. Time flies. And for the council's sake, everybody knows, the standards are the same.
Yes, sir.
If people don't choose to shop here, they don't pay the tax. There's been a lot of this and a lot of things that have been written, especially in nameless columns, but if people don't choose to shop at these locations, you don't pay the extra 1%, and the council is not, we are not giving anything that is upfront. Eric, correct?
Correct.
This is all based on their performance, and they have to remodel it and sell it, and then they get their money. Any questions for Mr. Narber? Any questions? We've been through this, we've talked about this quite some, this is really the final phase tonight of the approval from your aspect of the
Yes, sir.
process that we normally go through. Okay, if there's no other questions, any questions from the public? This is a public participation, public hearing. Are there any questions from the public at this time? Yes, sir?
Michael Hackburg. In the past, we've looked at giving incentives to corporations to have them improve their property, and typically, we used to limit that to between 5% and 7% of the cost of the improvements. Recently, we've had the Shrine Project come in and about 40% of the estimated cost there will be reimbursed with taxpayer funds. 6401 is about 60% of that will be reimbursed with taxpayer funds, and this project stands to get 100% of their financing reimbursed from taxpayer funds. We're not giving anybody an incentive to actually maintain their existing property within the city, and it seems to me like the incentives have gotten out of hand and they continue to decline. Although, being at 100%, if that was correct, that they plan on investing $2.5 million, and they'll get $2.5 million back in rebates for additional taxes that are collected. That's 100% of the money that they're putting in. They have no loss on it. They put it in, and the income's going to be there. Nobody's going to know when they go up to these businesses, which they're collecting for sales tax. People don't know until you go to leave an organization, and that's only if they get a receipt with a sales tax printed on it. And that's going to be upwards of 9.1%, and if things go the way the school wants it, it will be even higher next year. And people need to know what their sales tax are before they walk into an establishment, if it's going to be different based on every, you know, few hundred feet as you go down Main Street. Thank you.
Roger?
We allow two.
Your comment, your citizen?
We're sitting with three shopping centers in three blocks of West Belleville that are producing no revenue, they're on prime real estate, they're blighted, they're pulling down West Belleville, they're pulling down West Main, we're bringing back 6401, we're in the process of bringing back Shopland, eventually we'll bring back the arcades. These will be revenue generating strip centers. We all know we've got way too many old and blighted and outdated strip centers in this city. Hopefully, this will be the model, and don't forget, you know, 1% on a $100 purchase is $1. I don't think we need to be putting signs on doors, oh, if you shop here, you're paying one extra percent. Otherwise, you might as well put a sign on every guy's door and door. You know, any other city that you shop in, do they have signs on the door? If you shop here, you're paying one extra percent. Somewhere along the line, we gotta be more pro-economic development, filling storefronts, bringing in new construction, instead of beating up these developers. And don't forget, these people are taking a chance when they do these kind of things. This isn't, this isn't a, just a call for immediate success. I wouldn't want to be going into debt $2.5 million. God love the gentleman that owns Ace Hardware, if he's willing to make that commitment. But if we're going to bring back West Main, and if we're going to bring back these blighted shopping centers, we have to quit nitpicking every guy's during time, we want to give an incentive. And let me just tell you something else, O'Fallon has 600 acres or more in tiffs. Just so everybody out here knows, check O'Fallon.
Well, I concur with Mr. Whittington in that I thank Dennis's family for having the vision and the desire to reinvest in Shopland, it's been a long, long time. Of the three that Roger mentioned, I think his has by far been busiest. But this facelift and this reinvestment, this surge of excitement and dollars is going to help everything.
Not saying that I completely agree with everything that's done on redevelopment, but having read over the PATTI, the total estimated reimbursement from the 1% over until 2039 comes up to about $850,000, not the $2 million, so I don't really think there's a big potential.
I was just going to ask Eric, because I thought that was correct, too. Eric, you want to? I think you, I agree with you, I'm sure.
The $2.25 million, that's identified in the plan, and then the development agreement, which will be later this evening, those are the eligible costs based on possible future development in that center. But the initial development is not, not close to that, you know, when they, so the developer is actually purchasing the property and the building, which are actually on two separate ownerships right now, which is kind of funky, I'm not sure how that.
And that's been part of the problem with developing it in the past.
Right, so.
Which nobody realized.
They're going to consolidate this under one ownership, and then, so they don't own the site now. So they're going to make the improvements after they purchase the building and expand the store. And yeah, the business district, that money is collected over a 23-year period. And so, yeah, based on their estimates, based on the developer's estimates on sale, they look to get over 23-year life of that thing, $850,000. So, but the $2.25 million is what's eligible. It doesn't necessarily mean they were going to get, and it's all based on what's produced there. So we're not doing anything upfront, the city's not paying out any money. It comes from the sales of the store, it goes to the Department of Revenue, it's kept separately from the state budget, and then it comes to the city. And as they show us their, proof of their incurred costs, then that money's released back to the developer.
$800,000, is that currently, if there's no other tenants, or is that what is currently being generated?
It's based on projections, sales projections.
For new tenants also?
No, right now, it's just, it's just the
Existing.
Existing. So if he gets new tenants, it could be more.
Yes, sir. But if he gets new tenants, he's going to do investment more in the rest of the buildings.
But just because a dollar bond is produced in there doesn't mean it necessarily goes back to the developer. So if they have eligible costs of $1 million, for example, but $2 million is produced in the district, only $1 million would go back to the developer, the rest would bring in the district. And there are other eligible costs, you know, the city can do infrastructure improvements within the district if necessary, but.
Because if you look at the district, it actually goes out into the roadway there, the sidewalks and some of the stuff as well.
Right. And if the, if the site is completely built out, and all the eligible costs have been submitted, there's a potential to close it early, if necessarily, if the plan is.
If it meets its goal, it could be closed early.
Right.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Now that I've pontificated, it is real easy to be an armchair quarterback back and criticize business owners and developers. It's real easy to sit back when you don't have to worry about covering payroll, paying taxes, paying for your inventory. Don't forget, this city is built on the backbone of small business, and Alderman Bidner is a new small businessman in the city of Belleville, and God love him for stepping up to plate and wanting to take that chance and that gamble to be a small businessman. You know, after 40 years of business, I still can't figure it out, you know, and I'm there every day. But it's real easy to sit back when you don't have to cover those expenses and pay taxes and payroll to criticize people that want to step up to the plate, when you've got a city that's built on the backbone of small business.
Mr. Lanner, is your comments, is your comments about this public hearing or is it other public participation? Okay, you can come forward then, I just want to make sure, because we'll have public participation for everything else in a few minutes.
Mr. Stuart Lanner, Belleville. That development, it was such a great place, how come everybody left, is what I'm wondering. And to me, if Belleville is not growing, it's just basically static, which I don't think Belleville's growing too much. So all you're going to do by putting a PATTI shopping center here is drag customers from this one down here, and you're just going to drag them from here to there. I really, I'm not sure that the city can handle all this. If it's not growing and the population is static, who's going to go into them stores without hurting other stores that are dependent on existing people or a limited amount of customers? Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
Alicia Bradley, Belleville. In regards to the development that they are speaking about, I empathize with the developers, because we have families that had a salon over on that far end from Ace Hardware. They were forced to leave because of placement, they couldn't get in enough customers. The other part of that is, we have families that lives on the west end, and a lot of times, the eateries are so far in town, that if you don't have a car, you can't even get to a Burger King or anything like that. That place used to be their market, where they would shop. Now they have to come all the way in town. So it is important, and we all need each other from the development side to the taxpayer. We're all gambling. So the bottom line is, how do we make money?
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'd like to mention to the folks in the audience that are not aware that one of our problems in the city of Belleville is the general fund. The general fund is the fund that pays most of the salaries, the backbone, let's say, of our entire budget. When we do economic development, we do not do it just to develop something. We do it to make money for the city. I'd be perfectly happy to write this gentleman, or whoever's the developer, I'd be perfectly happy to write them a $2.5 million check, because we'll make $2.5 million. We don't give everything to him, it's a split. And if you remember, that the purpose of economic development is for the city to grow, this puts money into the general fund, and that's a very important point. You don't do this just so that we can develop things all over the place. We do it to enrich our general fund, because that's where most of our salaries and work comes from. Thank you.
Raffi?
What most people don't understand, Dennis Slavery went ahead and took a gamble. And he took a further gamble because he had to buy it two different ways. He had to buy it from the trust, meaning the land, and then he had to buy the property. And now he wants to go ahead and stick money into the infrastructure, which is sorely needed, and that's the only way that that's going to survive. God bless him for doing it. We need a hardware store in the west end of Belleville. Associated Bank went ahead and bought their property from the trust just recently. They're not afraid to do it. We need to welcome these business ventures that want to stay in our city. And we're kidding ourselves, if we don't grow, we die. Thank you, sir.
If there's nothing else, I'm going to close the public hearing. There'd be an action item as we move into the council meeting tonight. So hearing nothing else, closing the public hearing pertaining to the Shopland Plaza Business District. And thank you for all your comments. At this time, I'm going to open general public participation. If there's anything else that wasn't discussed here, or any other items that someone would like to say, this is your opportunity. Yes, ma'am?
Alicia Bradley, Belleville. I've been before many of you all many times, and I've written plenty of letters. As a taxpayer and an invested citizen like most of us, when I saw what was on the agenda, it raised high concern. I don't know if we're trying to sabotage each other or basically kill our own city, but with the articles and the way they go forward, no disrespect to BND, but the way that they write it, it's from one side. Because if you only quote, the big businesses are doing this and that, and as I stated, I empathize with the developer, because when you're a homeowner, just like when we had our issue with Lindenwood, I had to ask questions to find out the facts. The reality is, if you look around this room, the majority of our community is not present. So most of the facts that they get are hearsay. So now, how do we educate them? Because if we don't start to change and bring some developments in to make money, of course, we the taxpayers and all the business people pick it up. If we look back on history, I've had the pleasure of dealing with Dallas Cook for our FOIA's, and his father, and I wrote it down, was the mayor in 1993 to 97. My husband was hired in 1998, after the federal government decided there were not enough minorities hired in Belleville. After that, we had Mark Curran, which was one of the first debates that I came to when he was getting re-elected at the Lincoln Theater, and he was mayor from 1997 to 2004. Now, he appointed Mayor Ector. I only know this from coming to city council meetings and being involved in our own community. Mayor Ector, from 2004 to present, a lot of what he has done for the poor, the disadvantaged, and the community as a whole, and we don't agree all the time, but I will state that as an alderman, I saw what he did. As a mayor, if you research the facts, he has done a lot for community and businesses. So are we trying to repeat history, where we go back, no minorities, the federal government comes back in, or are we willing to change and understand we all need each other and stop sabotaging our projects so we can all make money? Thank you.
Okay. Any other public participation? Okay. We'll move on to, I'm sorry. Stuart, you got another comment?
Stuart Lanner, Belleville. Chief Clay should keep his personal opinions about citizens of Belleville that have been here long before he got here. He, I think, and one guy on the right there, the police. I wanted a person arrested, and I asked three times for that person arrested. After the third time, he handcuffed me and hauled me down to the jail. I spent the night in jail and had to pay $150 to get out. The next morning, I walked in, walked home, and then I filed a complaint against the police department, and within three hours of turning in that complaint, three hours, I get a call, a personal call from Chief Clay, and he calls me a liar and a troublemaker. Now, I might be a troublemaker, but I'm not a liar. And the Keller crews should be told by the mayor, alderman, if they would have made more progress on that shrine job, there would be no need for anyone to wonder, is that thing ever going to be finished? The mayor should stick up for Dallas Cook for showing concern for taxpayer money. And as for Belleville being safe, the people on the Titanic were safe until it hit the iceberg. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other comments tonight? Hearing done, I'm going to close public participation, and at this time, I'm going to have the privilege to bring in a young lady forward. Lizzie Michael, a senior at Altoth High School, is going to give us some words of wisdom from the Basic Initiative about our character word of the month. And I think, Lizzie, is it true, you've been in Basic all four years of high school?
Yes, sir.
Come forward to the microphone here, please. We're glad you're here tonight. Hey, she's smarter.
Hello, my name is Lizzie Michael, and I'm a senior at Altoth, and I am a member of the Basic Youth Board. The Basic Initiative Youth Board's mission is to encourage the students of Belleville to improve character by connecting them with our community through collaborative projects in order to positively influence Belleville and our schools. The word of the month is empathy. The definition of empathy is identifying and understanding other's feelings in order to get along better. Thank you.
Lizzie, thank you for taking time to come here, and you please tell all the members of Basic again, we appreciate what you're doing. I know you're going to schools tomorrow, again, some of you, and your service to the community is much appreciated by all of us. At this time, many of you have asked for updates, and last meeting was a little bit more like the agenda, so I put him off till tonight. Eric Schuster, our Assistant Director of Economic Development and Community Development, they're working together with Sherry, is, got a presentation on development agreement compliance. This goes back to 2015, the ones?
Yes.
So we're not, 2016, the book hasn't totally been closed. Thank you, Mike.
Is that tying the wire, that flag? I've got this presentation whittled down to about two and a half hours, so. I do have a lot to cover here, so I'll get right into it. This is for 2015, this is the form we use. We started using this in 2014. We actually had a kind of a procedure in place before that, it was more informal, but anytime anybody requested their rebates or anything like that, we then submit all their documentation to us before we send it to the finance department. So this just kind of formalizes what we had already been doing. And we, these are submitted annually, based on the date that the agreement was approved. And we do it for the life of the agreement, which is considered that time that they commit to remain and operate at the site. So we had 21 reports filed in 2014. So five of those projects were relocations within town, seven were expansions, and we got nine new businesses for developments. Eight of those projects occupied a demolished building, and then we had two company headquarters relocate. Those first, the incentives that we issued in that 12-month period, the first, you have the sales tax exemption there, and I put it on there, it's actually a stated incentive that the city's agreed to participate in, but I wanted it up here for discussion purposes. So if every building material on the projects, that bought materials in that one year, if all those materials were bought in Belleville, and they won't, we know that's not the case, but just for discussion, the city's portion of the sales tax would have been about $25,000. The tip rebates, $293,000, and that's a combination of facade improvements, property tax rebates, other tip eligible expenses, and then demolition of $175,000. A demolition is actually tip eligible, but I wanted to break it up because it's a little bit different than some of the others. Total of $494,000 roughly, but then the city's obligation is complete on 13 of those 21 projects. So they were either one-time, you know, abatements or something like that, or facade improvement, for example, or the agreement's on its course, but they still have to report. So we have four companies required to work their investment. Investment's typically done within that first 12 months anyway. So $4.3 million was required, we had $4.6 was invested, so an additional $300,000 in investment, which is always good with a local economy. This is why I'd be too happy to date investment. The jobs, I have part-time jobs in here, because some of these agreements go back to as early as 2003, when we accepted part-time jobs. Now, everything's done on a full-time equivalent basis, and we use the definition that's in the Enterprise Statute. We had 33 part-time jobs were required, 32 were reported, but it's not as bad as it sounds, because there were full-time jobs required, 197, actual jobs, 254. So fell short on the one part-time job, but the gain, 57 additional full-time jobs then was required. And the company that fell short on the part-time actually hired that many more full-time.
So they're excused.
I'll take that any day of the week. Sales tax probably gets the most attention out of the requirements, because it's one of the most direct benefits back to the city. There are a lot of indirect benefits and some other tangible things that you really can't put a price on. And there are some companies that don't generate sales tax, but sales tax, and before I move on, sales and investment dollars are actually considered proprietary information, and I can report this to you in aggregate, so as a collection of all of them, but I can't report to you the individual, any individual business's sales or investment, because if it's made public, then those numbers could be used against that business by a competitor. And actually, the city and the individual who, at least at a time, should be sued. So I'd rather not go to you. So, but we had $25.4 million was required for sales, and we had $61 million. sixty-one million dollars reported. Couple of reasons I think for that jump is that, one, is that we tell everybody to be as conservative as possible in the application. You know, we know, we hope what you, we know what you hope to do with business, but what is, what's the most realistic number to put in it? The other reason is that they're just more successful when they come to it. So thirty-five and a half million dollars in additional sales that is required. And what does that translate to in terms of sales tax generated? Well, based on the numbers in the agreements, we expected to get about three hundred and twenty-nine thousand in sales tax. Based on the reports, we got six hundred and ninety-one thousand. And that's eight companies for one year, six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. So three hundred and sixty-two thousand more than we expected. So when we talk about the incentives that we issued, four hundred and ninety-three thousand plus, and then, but taxes generated, and there are a lot of other taxes here, but I put in here the sales tax that's generated and then the increment in the tips, tip districts. Doesn't necessarily mean that the increment was generated by the project, but just what was generated in that tip district for all those properties, it's over a million dollars. This doesn't include payroll taxes or utility taxes, anything like that, but just to give you an idea, if you want to call it a net gain, five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in one year. That'd be a pretty good return on investment. And it is an investment. If I can get on soapbox here for a minute. The, this notion that we are quote giving away money, it's really inaccurate, if I can preach for a minute, because we don't give away money. If we did, we wouldn't have applications or agreements or reporting anything like that. But these companies are, as Mr. Wiggington alluded to, they're taking risks. And we typically participate in a level of two to five, or two to seven percent of the total project costs. We don't finance upfront. We don't finance projects. You know, typically, these are production-based, so they have to do the work and then they receive the incentive. And I'm a taxpayer too, so I wouldn't give money away. And it really gets under my skin when people say it, because we are partnering, we're making an investment in the project. If we were, you know, this idea that we're somehow writing a check to a millionaire who flies off to Hawaii with it, it's ridiculous. It's offensive, because we are trying to drive economic development. And until no one else does, this is, these are the programs we use. So, okay, I'll get off this. But what are we getting? Well, we were able to retain a car dealership that was going to move to I-64, and car dealerships are very large sales tax groups. We have a new bank in Belleville that occupied a vacant building and made some major improvements. We have improved the sods downtown. We have expanded manufacturing. Two new training facilities with Ameren and Humpers and Pipe Fitters to bring a lot of trainees to town throughout the year. Expanded retail downtown. Five movie theaters we didn't have before, and one of the finest family entertainment facilities in the region to bring a lot of people from Missouri. And they're in their next phase of expansion as well. We have a grocery store that occupied a site that was set, that sat vacant for seven years. We participated with demolition and they've been open for two years. Within the third year, we will have made our money back in sales tax.
And Eric, if I can add, in a recent comment by that illustration, that store is the third highest producing store in the Midwest. Other new stores, so quite a few, like on forty. It's this store here, they told me about six, eight months ago, was third.
We have Belleville's first brewery in thirty years. That, they are in expansion mode right now because they're gonna be selling to ten thousand Missouri locations here pretty soon. They're also named in the top twenty-one breweries in Illinois. And as a fun side note, there are groups of beer aficionados out there who look at these lists and then they travel to the different breweries, so it's a tourism generator as well. And then the place we're sitting in right now, Lindwood University, I can't tell you how important it is to economic development to have a university near your town. I mean, you talk to any developer or site selector and I'll tell you, it's pretty high on the list. And I have a pretty good feeling that if we'd not partnered with Lindwood, we'd still be staring at a vacant high school campus in the middle of town. And these are partnerships, public-private partnerships. In fact, there are some communities that don't call them development agreements, they simply call them public-private partnerships. This is three twenty-five West Main Street. It was a building that really wasn't usable anymore because it was not accessible to any degree. And then Matt Medical, who makes stretchers and other medical equipment, they have their manufacturing plant in another town, but they wanted to move their headquarters here. They literally took this building down to the dirt floor. And now their headquarters is located in downtown, where they have state-of-the-art office and showroom where they bring their clients to sell their products. When I was a student at the theater grade school, I had the seventies and eighties, from our playground, we looked across the street to the abandoned pants factory, and it was vacant then. We participated in demolition on some of these sites, and now we have a first-grade senior living facility that has a weight on us. There are people who are upset that they make too much money to live here, because there are so many income restrictions. And when I talk about those tangible things and those indirect benefits, this is one of the projects I'm talking about, because, you know, indirectly, you have people shopping downtown, you know, because you have, they live there. They may bring their relatives in to visit grandma, and they may go out to eat, you know. We can't track that directly, but then you talk about perception. You know, the old saying, perception's reality. You have to consider which reality you want to support. And these, these projects all have to benefit the city. And if they didn't, we wouldn't bring them to you. I can't tell you how many times, how many projects you've not seen come to committee or council, because we're sitting with somebody in our office and they want us to fund their project. They just want us to give them some money upfront and then not ask any questions, or show us a business plan, or what's your last name? So you beat mine, you caught us a line, how often that happens. Anyways, a couple more slides and I'll wrap up. This is the old YMCA. Top one is the gym and the, the other pictures upstairs. We went out for proposals a few years ago on redevelopment of the YMCA and got a lot of great response, a lot of great ideas, but every single one of them had the city maintaining the property and running all the programs. So unfortunately, it was slated for demolition, because it was, it was getting in such bad shape, the roof was in terrible shape, and it just wasn't in the cards. And then along comes replacement services that were looking for a place to locate their company. And we partnered with them and now, this is the same, this is in the gym, what used to be the gym. And if you want to tour, just go and walk up and ask Kurt Rarier, he will gladly take your ring. And upstairs, we have the Pier One Fifty-One Co-Working Space, which is, it's the only thing like this on this side of the river. It is a small startup businesses, they basically pay a membership fee, and they're able to use the copiers and the wifi and the meeting space, they can network with the other small businesses, there's a mentoring program, and it's pretty amazing, like I said, it's the only thing on this side of the river. Across the hall, there's a meeting room that gets used by Scanner Force Base quite a bit, as well as the Junior Code Academy, which teaches computer coding to kids, which is something that's upcoming. But also, the Leadership Council, Southwestern Illinois, helped, one of their quarterly economic development network meetings there, and they were so impressed by not only what was going on in the building, but what was going on in Belleville, that they are looking to partner with St. Louis Regional Chamber to bring a developer tour.
And I've since met, I've since met with them and that's gonna happen this spring.
So you can't really put a price on that. What you can't put a price on is that if we had not partnered with replacement services, we would have spent triple in demolition, what we did, and helped them fix it. All right, last one, I promise. I said this a little tongue-in-cheek, and then blame or credit, but Marketplace Shopping Center, we all know the story. Fifteen years out of town owner, out of state owner, didn't invest in the property, didn't answer our phone calls or our inquiries.
Our tickets?
Dragged that, well, yeah, dragged it down the West End, and we did everything we legally could, I think. We issued tickets, took it to court, did about everything we could, and they still made very minimal investment in the property. And people say, why can't you do anything about it? Well, we get blamed for this. Me, you, the mayor, everybody, we get blamed for this, because even though we did everything we could, it's not, well, we just did do something about it. Had we not partnered with Adam Ellen Higginson, I can guarantee you a one-hundred percent certainty, we'd still be looking at the picture on the left. When, on the economic side of things, Family Dollar has already seen an increase in sales since they started the renovation, a while since. When you talk about indirect benefits, the project that we voted on later tonight, Shopland, is tied to this happening. Without this happening, I'm not sure that Dennis would have taken the risk and set to make the investment in that project. But then you talk about some of those intangible things, ask anybody in the West End, how much better they feel about Belleville right now than they did three months ago?
The building next door is down as of the last couple of days. Getting rid of that new dialysis center right there.
This shows that Belleville's a good place to invest. This is why these programs exist. This is economic development in a nutshell right here. It's not always pretty, and I appreciate you all, council members, I know these are hard decisions, and I know you sometimes take a lot of e-form, but one of the reasons that the presentation is so long, because I could have just thrown the numbers up there and bored everybody dead more than I already have, but it does tell the whole story, because sometimes we're in this, in the weeds so much on this, we kind of forget how far we've come. And even though this project is not in that two thousand and fifteen reporting cycle, it was too much of a dramatic change for me not to show. But it's like I said, sometimes we forget how far we've come, and all those projects and all the investment and all the, you know, taxes generating and everything, unless for one year. And, you know, when our, when our investment is done, you know, when our cycle is done, say for five years on the property tax rebate, that company is gonna stay there and keep producing. So, all right, I'll put there, but when I ask the question blame or credit, you want to continue to get blamed for what's on the left, or you want to be able to take credit for what we've done, I'll write. With that, I'll answer any questions or questions?
Number one, numbers don't lie. Bravo to you and Anissa for putting this together for the council. We needed to see the kind of return.
Eric did it on the phone.
What'd she say?
Eric did it on the phone.
God love Eric. We needed to see the return on our investment. This is, number one, is very concise, but it's laid out very well. I issue a challenge to our friends at the Belleville News Democrat, the Post Dispatch, who continued, and I want this to be in the minutes, recorded, they continue to beat up Belleville because we're using TIFs. While all the surrounding communities, like say, O'Fallon's got over six hundred acres of TIFs, I never see O'Fallon get beat up about anything. We are, we are moving forward. This is proof positive right here, and it's time that the press steps up to the plate and gives Belleville credit for the economic development and what we're doing, this entire city, everybody working together. But I'm sick and tired of O'Fallon getting all the accolades, Belleville getting kicked in the head, and we're the one, we're a two-hundred-year-old city, you got O'Fallon as an open slate, as a, like a blank canvas. Of course they can expand.
With an interstate.
With an interstate, thank you. So I issue a challenge to these newspapers, that you step up to the plate and you start reporting exactly this kind of stuff that he put up on that screen, because that is what Belleville's all about. And I'm tired of the press beating up on this city.
I want to echo that, and the other thing that I would give a challenge to is the fact that you only talk to the naysayers.
Absolutely.
And I think that you need to talk to other people, and especially in some of the articles later that are done, you didn't even talk to the article, you didn't even talk to the alderman in that thing. We're talking to other people who are not invested in that end of the town. So my challenge goes even further, is that we need to start getting, talking to other people that are the positives in the town and stop talking to only the naysayers.
Thank you, Phil.
I'd like to update on what's going on at the building, the empty Walmart, my word.
There's some, as I told you not too long ago, the divorce between Mr. Cronkey and Stainberg, I think, has pretty much come to an end, and we've got some possible movement finally, but, you know, our hands have been tied. We've had people wanting to own that building, and that was in a standstill in the courts.
That's something we've never heard about, though.
Oh, I've said it how many times in committee, I've said it here.
No, I've heard from you once. I'm not saying.
Maybe it was immediately you weren't at, but I mean, I've repeated it. We've, we've had numerous proposals to try to go in there. For the longest time, the two of them agreed on this. They wouldn't entertain anything, because up until two thousand and thirteen, they were getting full rent from Walmart. THF was getting the full rent, so they wouldn't even entertain somebody to buy or lease the property. After two thousand and thirteen is when they went head over heels into their legal battle of separation, and it's just now that they've split who's got what. And, but we do have, and I don't have any particulars to go into detail, but we got a nibble just, and this had called me on what, Wednesday?
No, I sent you a text message on Friday.
Okay, I was in Chicago when you called, I have it texted me. So it's, it's, there's some things generated, so I hope, I hope we have more soon. But that's also, and we do know, Anissa, can we talk about the other building?
Oh, in that development?
In that development out there.
We don't have an occupancy on it, but I'll be happy to talk to people after the meeting.
Yeah, if the alderman want to talk to Anissa, there's another building there that's empty, that we've got the process starting to fill it, and that's another positive thing that just been, been working with, but just now getting to the point of announcement. So there's some, there's some things.
And there were many attempts made to try to contact real estate agents or ownership, and they were all revved up, tied.
Yeah. Okay, good, healthy conversation, Eric. Thank you, Anissa. Thank you. Okay, we move on to the regular part of the meeting. We have the approval of the minutes from City Council, November twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alderman Tyler, second by Alderman Cybert. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing done, all in favor of accepting and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposing motion carries. We move over to claims, payroll, disbursements, and ask for a motion to pay the claims in the amount of seven million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, eight forty-three and ten cents, and a payroll of eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, three sixty-one and thirty-nine cents. Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Anthony. Discussion on the claims and payroll. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Bletty.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggintang.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion's carry. Or reports, Alderman Silsby, oh, I'm sorry, Consilla.
I move we grant approval of the redevelopment agreement with O'Fallon Hardware LLC-np properties for the redevelopment of Shopland Plaza contingent on approval of ordinance seventy-nine ninety-four.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Anthony, waiting for you guys on the West End there. Do we have a motion, we have a second? Do we have discussion on this recommendation? Roll call. I'm sorry, Mr. Bittner?
I just want to make some comments. I'm all for, I think I'm developing, I really am. Wigginton said, I'm a small business owner here in town too. Raising taxes, though, I have problems in these business districts raise taxes. I just, I get a lot of people that talk to me about these, these business districts, the increased sales tax. It's not being negative, and when we question things, when we, and when we maybe disagree with things, it's not being negative, it's a different point of view. I'm all for this investment by this individual, I just, I'm gonna vote against this tonight, basically because I do not like raising taxes on these citizens.
Eric.
Yes, Mr. Ray.
Field one percent of a hundred dollars is one dollar, and Alderman Consilla struck a court. We're bringing back non-generating properties back to life. You don't get paid, Dallas doesn't get paid, Indy doesn't get paid, the other members of this, this city that work, they don't get paid if we don't generate revenue for this of this city that work, they don't get paid if we don't generate revenue for this city. So, you know, it's, I don't know, maybe Mr. Bittner thinks that one extra dollar is going to drive people away or break them, you know, maybe it will, I don't know. I've only been in this as forty years, I'm still trying to figure it out. But, you know, nobody likes taxes, but it's the reality of the situation. We still have to run this city, and we still have to be accountable for the people, the residents that live in this city.
And once again, just repeat this, because this doesn't get quoted properly. If you don't choose to go to this development, you don't pay it. That's your choice. That's America. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we've heard comments, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cyber.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries. Zoning Board of Appeals.
Eleven B, one, case thirty-nine, November sixteen, Williams Inc., City of Bellville, request to rezone the property at ten twenty Freeburg Avenue, parcel number zero eight dash two seven point zero dash three one three dash zero one six, for a one-single-family residence to a C-two heavy commercial district, applicable portion of zoning code sixty dash six dash one through sixty dash six dash seven and sixty dash six slash forty-seven through sixty dash six dash fifty-two in Ward six, and the zoning board recommends approval four to zero for the special use request with the following stipulation, that is, in the name of the applicant only.
So, motion by Alderman, Randall, second by Alderman Tyler, to adopt the zoning board's recommendation, have the proper ardnances drawn, proper ardnances drawn. Any comments, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Communications, don't have any this evening. Petitions none, resolutions none. Ardnances, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-four. So, motion by Alderman Galletti, second by Alderman Elmore. Discussion on reading it by title only, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Fifteen A, ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-four, twenty sixteen, ordinance of the City Council of City of Bellville, Illinois, adopting the Shopland Plaza Business District Plan, making findings of fact with respect to such area, designating and establishing the Shopland Plaza Business District pursuant to the Business District Development and Redevelopment Law, authorizing the imposition and collection of a sales tax within such business district, providing for further authority, establishing effective date, and other related matters.
I hear motion, approve this. Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Musgrove. Additional questions or comments about ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-four? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
No.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cyber.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries. Fifteen B, ordinance seventy-nine ninety-six, twenty sixteen, is one ordinance regarding case number thirty-nine, November sixteen, Williams Inc., City of Bellville.
Fifteen C, ordinance seventy-nine ninety-seven, twenty sixteen, zoning ordinance regarding case number forty, November sixteen, Torres Corporation. Fifteen D, ordinance seventy-nine ninety-eight, twenty sixteen, ordinance amending chapter seventy-five, traffic other revised ordinances of the City of Bellville, Illinois, amended by amending portions of sections thereof.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve those three ardnances as read, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Tyler, do I hear discussion on any of those three ardnances? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cyber.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries. We have an unfinished business. Alderman Bittner.
Eric, the last meeting, you said that you were going to be meeting with the Keller's regarding the convenience store?
Got a meeting?
And?
Very positive?
Is there any progress? Is one thing going to break ground?
The anticipation in that meeting was that ground could be broken as winter ceases, possibly as soon as the end of March, first April.
Is there any movement with IDOT as far as traffic studies or?
Traffic studies to do, the opening, the convenience store and the Hopper House, there's nothing that has to be done per IDOT's request for those two.
Okay.
Anything additional to that, there has to be some intersection improvements.
All right.
And I will say that I also, if any of you get an opportunity, Jack Flash opened a new store in Farmersville, just twenty miles south of Springfield, I visited on my way back from Chicago this weekend, and it is beautiful. Absolutely beautiful, a convenience store. So if you get a chance, if you're up that way going to Springfield, Chicago.
And it's not the typical model of a convenience store.
No, no, this is a very classy, I'm very impressed. The owner, in our meeting last week, encouraged me, because I mentioned I was going to Chicago, and Mr. Horner went by there going to Springfield two weeks ago and said, too, stop and see him, it's awesome. So I just tell you that, so.
So as far as, is there any movement with IDOT? Do you do any planning or traffic counts so we possibly get the hotel started?
Oh, it's in the works. The engineering is being done. The Kellers have hired the engineer. The engineering's being done. Preliminary reports have been sent in to IDOT's engineers, and, Tim, we were there how long ago with the engineer, you and I, and I mean, it's in the works, but, yeah, it's in the process.
So IDOT's working on it?
IDOT's reviewed the preliminary plans, and I guess the final plans could go sometime this spring.
And have we seen the franchise agreements with the hotel, because in the paper they mentioned they were going to have a press conference?
No, after all the calls and stuff that Garrett Horner and I were feeling today, I wasn't about to press for that because we were dealing with other calls about the hotel, et cetera, so we'll get to that.
So we haven't seen anything yet?
I don't have anything in my possession at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions, unfinished business, are mislaid, some new business?
One last thing on City Hall.
Yep.
I thought originally we were going to be able to get back in.
And I think I've made it clear here that when the architect changed companies, and, well, first of all, I made it, I think I made it very clear, Police Station was probably a good three to four weeks late in moving because of some, part of it was fiber optics and the police station, part of it was transferring, the nine-one-one center in correlation with St. Clair County, there was some AT&amp;T things we had to work out, and there was some other issues. So the Police Station didn't get moved as quick as we were originally anticipating in those estimates. Then, we found out the architect that we'd had changed companies, and basically did not tell the truth, that he was, he said he was done with the plans, and he was far from done with the plans when he left. So the company had to scramble to finish those plans. We are now, been out to bid, I am meeting, Kenny, we're meeting tomorrow or the next day?
Tomorrow afternoon.
Tomorrow afternoon, we're meeting with Mike Crist to review what he's been deciphering, and we will be going to Finance Committee, probably, could be in December?
Yes, sir.
I mean, this month yet?
Hopefully.
Hopefully, we're going to go next week, but, or if not, we'll have to have a special one, we're going to move it forward. But we're moving, it is slow. Now, the building's torn down, as you know, and I think, Kenny, what have we got, about a week, week and a half in asbestos abatement?
A week for the south end or the PD, and probably another two weeks to finish up over in City Hall.
And where the mayor's office, clerk, and treasurer are. So we're to the end of the year to finish all the abatement, but we're not, but by then, we'll have proposals to the council for a bidding contract, and we should be ready to start inside first of the year. Correct, Kenny?
Yes.
Is there any cost overruns because of those delays?
We're reviewing it now, there's definitely, there's definitely been some challenges we're facing. We will sit down once we hear from Mr. Crist, what he's recommending, the valued engineering, where we can make some adjustments, and we will bring a package to you all very soon, within the next couple of weeks with some proposals, and then we'll have to make some decisions.
Is there any way, since it's not our fault that the architect wasn't prepared?
I guess we can take, well, we're going to review that, and I will have, I've kept our city attorney totally abreast, and, you know, I'm not sitting here tonight threatening or saying that there's going to be any action, but we're going to review all asbestos because there's been some delays, et cetera, that I think need to be reviewed, but at this point, it's too premature to guess that.
Okay, sorry. Our agreement with Lenwood meeting here was through December?
We talked with them, we're going to be at the next meeting, having an official item on the agenda to get the extension. Once I meet with Mr. Crist and Kenny this week, and we get a little better scope of whatever we think, a reasonable amount of time, we're going to ask to extend it. I would tell you right now, I'd have to believe that it's probably going to be the first of May until we're back in City Hall. That's just a guess, but I think it's the best guess I can give you at this point. I don't like it, but it's the reality of when you go to remodel something big, there's always a lot of challenges.
Eric.
Yes, sir.